This is a special meeting which is due to be posted for the Harlingen Civic Division Order, and I want to have a meeting, so to add a number two to Citizen Communication. But we have people signed up for Citizen Communication.
Juan Ortega, Mayor, 201, Alami Circle.
Okay, Juan Ortega, it's on him in the audience, he's signed up.
You can do the prayers and invocations.
Who's going?
Good question.
Okay, Minerva Simpson.
I'm sorry. Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Minerva Simpson, 5701 Parkland Street. I'm here to just give my opinion once again about the tax increase that we are facing today. And I would just like to say if it goes forward, that I'm very disappointed that it's happening at this time. Based on the last meeting I attended here, it showed your budget, and it seems that the deficit from your budget was being incurred by the golf course, and it seemed like it was the largest part of your deficit. I sincerely hope that you would reconsider, and perhaps take into account the assets that the city has that are underutilized and are causing the liability in both budgeting and also cost of insurance, and how you reconsider in perhaps selling those assets, including the golf course. I understand that the city has approached the school, and the school has declined to take over those nine holes. And I know that we have several other options for golfing in this state. Again, I ask that you reconsider, and that we look at those assets, and consider selling them to bring in some of the revenues that you need. Thank you.
Juan Ortega.
Hello, Commissioners, Court, Mayor. My name is Juan Ortega, 2401 Alami Circle. I came to speak on behalf of those who are against the tax increase, and from what I've been seeing, there's an individual claiming that there is some violations on how we got to this point, and if no one can really explain it. I was explaining those violations, and we're gonna vote, even though according to that individual, he was right in saying what he said. And it has to do with September 1 ruling by the state on meetings and issues having to do with raising taxes. And there were clearly a few violations from what I was presenting, unless there's a different view. But I know as an individual that has 100% acceptance, I feel for those who are actually paying those because right now currently, they're getting four whammies, and that was a four of origin, the county, the city, and the flood. And how can people actually be able to afford all these issues and have those property taxes raised upon them again when the city is known to be giving abatements to corporations that have deep pockets and can afford it? But yet because of those abatements, they're dumping those property taxes on over to the people who cannot afford to be able to spend more money on their living expenses. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you.
Roy DeSano.
241 Riverside Drive. There has already been a notion that several of you all really like invocations, and yet here we don't have that. There's also a lack of courage, there's no video, which is pretty odd considering we always have that context. So, getting back to this process that was just brought up, it didn't start well, nor does it look like it's going to end well. Though one district, they always feel it's being sold out. The machinations of one individual still stand out. It's because of the public hearings that were conducted and never was there compliance with required mandates. Yet a departed bureaucrat widely says all legal necessities have been met, and then leaves for McAllen. On September 4th, despite audio/video evidence produced by the city, the mayor has the mendacity to suggest he uttered words that he never said. If that were not enough, he then challenges the city to prove him different. Well, I tell you that 35th minute of the September 4th meeting indicates that nothing was said regarding public comment, and it shows how wrong he was in not accepting the cathartic waters of truth. He may not realize that others are following his devious lead, and that's deeply troubling to other city fathers who have preceded his tenure. The U.S. Constitution day-to-day, but Boswell asserts that Eagle Scout Valley, and brave soldiers have also defended the First Amendment. So that's that. He realizes the emperor has no clothes.
Robert Lepwitch.
Okay, Robert Lepwitch, Non-ali, Parker, Harlingen, Texas. I just wanted to first start off, we talked about the additional expense that people are gonna incur from this tax increase, and that it's basically because of irresponsible spending on the behalf of the City Commission over the last year. We already talked about the priorities, but I wanted to go back and revisit that because I think it shows even more irresponsibility. The fact is that we talked about the convention center project, and it was 14, it's gonna be about $20 million. We talked about the potential funding source, which is the 4B. We talked about the Baxter Building, which was $1.5 million again, potential funding sources 4B. And now we're looking at the Long C Hill Destination Park, which is priority number four, which is $12,600,900. Then we go back to the drainage, and it's, well, let's go back to this, potential funding source, 4B. All three of those priorities are far less important than the drainage and the infrastructure that the city and the citizens deserve in this community. So we look at that, priority number seven, the drainage, potential funding sources, 4B. Mayor, you indicated in an interview that you could use economic development corporation money for drainage. Well, guess what? The 4A meeting, in their proposed budget, they have $200,000 to create a drainage facility. I guess that was inaccurate, or is that a misstatement, or that was a nefarious statement? I don't know. The other thing is that you guys just had a joint workshop with the 4B meeting, the 4B Board, two weeks ago to consider the first phase of this super park. This super park, this $8 million project, is not something that's out a year or two years. You guys were had on the agenda to spend $3 million two weeks ago, which was tabled, and I would call that irresponsibility when you are coming to the citizens and asking for a tax increase, saying that it's for drainage, when that money obviously can be used for drainage.
Juan Garcia.
Hello, Juan Garcia, 718 Wild for Simmon. Good afternoon. First of all, I would like to thank the one leader that we have up there. Commissioner Puente, thank you very much for being on the right side of history and being the lone dissenting vote. I wish that your colleagues here would follow suit. This is the second of two public hearings. Still don't know if the first one was legal or not, as for the attorneys to fight in court. And the only reason we're having the opportunity to speak today is because you are required to do so by law, not because you want to hear our ideas, or you want to hear what we have to say, or that you really care. June 24th, dubbed the Great June Flood, Part II by the National Weather Service, displaced many people. You all are raising taxes on people's homes while they're renting in other places. Think about that for a moment, okay? Again, Senate Bill Number Two, I've said this before, previously, you're trying to beat the clock. January 1st, 2020, it becomes effective, but from now until then, TikTok, TikTok can write a song about that. So, you're trying to take advantage of loopholes from now until December to do what you can with taxpayer money. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, and people, that's what they're doing. So no, this tax hike will not help fund solutions for our drainage crisis. It won't. No matter how you play with the numbers, it does not solve any problems, and as a professional engineer who understands this and is a subject matter witness and expert on this, I can tell you that that is not the problem. I'll tell you right now what the problem is, your failed drainage ordinance. That is why we flood. I hope you all know that already. I really hope that you all understand that the reason why we're flooding everyone in Harlingen is because we have a failed drainage ordinance. Okay? So please, talk to your new engineer about that, and I hope you all can fix it. Covering up your mistakes on a failed balance budget should not be priority number one. Priority number one should be drainage. Thank you.
Jesús Aguilera.
Jesús Chuy Aguilera, 413 West Jackson. Two buildings here, never been here before. To all San Benito, politics is bad in San Benito, you know that. The good thing I've heard was that you guys weren't gonna raise taxes. All of a sudden today, you know, we're gonna raise taxes. Kind of the same story I told San Benito, even though you don't care. Henry Tamey was told by his dad. All you need to do, sir, is learn to count to four, because it doesn't matter what we say here. If you have the four votes, you're gonna do whatever you want to do. But yes, my two buildings flooded up to my knee. So I'm just here, come on, guys, do the right thing. Harlingen, I never come over here, I've never come here. You guys do the right thing. Just do the right thing, and it'll go away. If you need to raise taxes, tell them why. Don't make excuses, it was golf, I've heard different things. Okay? Just do the right thing. I mean, we all know how it floods here in Harlingen, and I still came here. We have a house here. All right? Come on, listen. Listen to the people. Don't be San Benito man. Thank you.
Thank you.
DeSano Aguilera.
Good afternoon. Radana Aguilera, 1314 Oak Court. I also have never been here, but as I've listened to everyone speak, I thought of something that I read today, which is kind of crazy because I wasn't even expecting to be here. And it says, "Justice will not be served until those who are unaffected are as outraged as those who are." Benjamin Franklin. I had read in the paper that you all were planning on raising taxes, and I thought, okay, well, you know, they want to do some good things with those taxes. So I thought I was one of those unaffected people, but as I've thought about it, and as I've heard people talking, I've kind of asked around, you know, what you all are planning on doing with the money, I thought, wait a minute, I am one of those affected people. Because like my husband said, we do own a home, we own two buildings, two did flood up to our knees, and I'm saying to myself, I need to be outraged, and everyone in this room needs to be outraged, and you all should be outraged because you all are here to represent your community. And if your community is saying, we can't afford our taxes to be raised because we are living in someone else's home right now because our homes are flooded, some of that area over there still has water, and I really, it's kind of sad that although I've never been here before, I'm here under these circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raymond Reyes.
Commissioners, Raymond Reyes, 706 Nan Ticker Drive, Harlingen, Texas, obviously. There's been a lot of talk back and forth about where this fund is gonna actually be used. I've been here, fortunately, back and forth from San Antonio, where I'm originally from, but been doing business since 76. A lot of things have changed, some for the good, some for the bad. I think I've seen a lot of bad decisions made when we rush into things, maybe to please other entities for whatever the reason may be, politics, business, thinking that we're doing the right thing usually may turn out for the wrong reasons. So I think we should just think about, from what I have heard about, think about this increase and some of the other projects that we have going on. I didn't think Harlingen, after being here so long, going back and forth, traveling the globe many times, in the military and in the private sector, for the work that I do, which is IT work, I would have left Harlingen. But Harlingen has a lot of potential, and it still has a lot of potential. We just need to start, actually, in my opinion, thinking more positive on what, how everybody's gonna benefit, and not just a certain sector of the citizens of Harlingen. If that were the case, then, believe me, I've done very well in San Antonio. But I have grandkids here, I have a lot of family here now, so I just invested a lot of money in my building, in my property on downtown Jackson. So I'm hoping that the right decisions are made for the right reasons, not just to please somebody else, because I've been down that road, I've seen it done a lot. So I'm just hoping a good decision can be made today. Thank you very much for your time.
Kathleen Sheldon.
Kathleen Sheldon, 1609 Ace Van Durin, Harlingen. I'm very shaky, nervous about being here, but I feel like I had to speak up, not so much for or against the tax thing. I was at the September 4th meeting, and my memory, you know, with the white hair, my memory may be faulty on this. I didn't recognize the first two items that were paragraphs as being the tax issue, but they were written in wording that didn't trigger that for me. But I also don't recall that you actually said, this is a citizen issue, you can come and speak for or against, like you always do, you always do. If you were looking for it, as Mr. Devaya said in his newspaper article, quoting you that you said you were looking for it, yes, but I took that period of time to mean you were opening it up for your fellow commissioners, your commissioners to make their statements. So I went to Google the video for the commission meeting for September 4th, and I couldn't find it. I saw the one for the end of August, or the August, last one in August. So I thought, well, maybe I'm not remembering right, but I felt I needed to bring that up because you always do say this is a citizen comment thing. I don't recall that you said that, that's the first thing. The second thing was when Mr. Puente, I don't know when he first said he wasn't gonna be here today, but you put this thing for today because Mr. Nesmar was gonna be absent, and I don't really recall how many, I mean, I don't know how many it takes, how many commissioners it takes to vote on something, but I think I've been here when there hasn't been a full complement, and yet you voted on things. If Mr., I came because mainly to, if Mr. Puente wasn't here, but you were still gonna vote, what's the difference between if Mr. Puente wasn't here and Mr. Nesmar? So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I have a, I think it's a gentleman, resident of 909 North 26th Street, I believe it, Mr. Marta?
Martínez.
Martínez.
I had to head out, started your book. But I'm here because there's been so many things going on here in Harlingen.
Can you give us your name?
The Nobio Martínez. I worked for the city for 14 years. I worked with the fire department, I worked for the city, and I left Harlingen because of taxes back in about 28 years ago. Okay? I moved to San Benito because I built a house on Berkeley, and it was one of my first houses that I built here, and my taxes went up. And every time they built a house or rotten house, my taxes would be, you know, shooting up and all that. So I lived in San Benito for 20, almost 30 years, and I just moved to Harlingen two years ago. And then I hear you talking, and you're making a lot of good things for the city, free concerts and, you know, for the kids and all that, the park, which is tremendous. But then you come back, and then you want to increase our taxes on, you know, on people that are already on a set budget, are retired, I'm on a set budget, and I don't know how much money you guys make. And I don't even wanna know your salaries, but it seems like you guys always come back to the old people, people that didn't hear the longest, and you wanna hit them again with more taxes. I mean, there's a lot of departments in the city that I think they have money, and you guys can, you know, borrow money from each other, or work the budget in other ways, but just don't have it come back to the citizens. I'm trying to make my living like all the guys had. My grandkids are here, I work with the oil patrol sector, and I wanted to come back home. But if you guys are making, you know, plays, you know, for us to be, just you should have money, you should have money. Last time my water bill came out to about $150, that happened. I had a minor rupture. And then I find out that the city is charging me to sweep and to maintain my street, and I never seen a sweep go through.
Thank you, Ms. Puente.
You know, there's so many things that you guys are not doing right, that, you know, now today I decided, you know what, you can take this time from me, I think, but, you know, there's so many things that I want to do.
Thank you. Those are all of the people who signed up for Citizen Communication. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding Harlingen agenda item tonight? Does anybody else want to speak regarding agenda item?
Mayor, I'd like a clear prediction. If you don't sign up and speak on the action items that come up prior to this agenda act. That's part of the law, but the law such a poor hearing.
It can be anything, it can also be on the agenda item tonight.
Yes, but what I'm asking is that if they don't speak on the items, can they speak during the act as the agenda is being discussed? And I...
I'm asking if anybody else wants to speak. Mr. Lepwitch, do you want to speak? Anybody else wants to come up and speak?
I want to know if we can see when the action...
That's what I'm asking, so go ahead, Mr. Lepwitch, go ahead.
Oh, I can wait till I get this question answered. I'm not in a hurry.
If you don't want to speak...
I do want to speak, my question, I don't want to be rude.
We want the question answered.
I can wait for him to answer his question.
That's a clarification.
I don't understand the question.
Mayor, I would remind you that the city attorney heard it not for dialogue or communication, so probably need to take to the other exchange. Gonna make a statement.
All right, well then, again, I'm gonna...
That's not true either, what he just said.
I'll let the city attorney handle that aspect of the question.
Maybe the city attorney can answer the question. Yeah, during, you know it says during the act, agenda item. The law change provides that the citizen can be afforded their action on the right and opportunity to be afforded, depending on the meeting, as we're doing right now, or it can be afforded at any time. Or I know that it is afforded before the action...
Thank you for that clear prediction.
During the item. That's what the statute said, I have the bill right here. Thank you for that clear prediction.
If nobody else wants to speak, I'm gonna go ahead and conclude with the public...
No, I'm here, you see that I'm gonna speak.
Start, please.
I wasn't gonna be rude, we're having a conversation, and I'm not letting you figure out...
I'm not having a conversation, I'm asking if you want to speak.
I am, you see me here, I'm not letting you be rude to me, okay? You should be professional, and I'm gonna make you be professional to me and respect me, okay? I am a citizen, I'm a taxpaying citizen, I live at 502 West Lincoln, my name's Enrique Abúliz. You will not talk to me that way. I'm a grown adult, you will speak to me like a grown adult, okay?
I'm asking if you want to speak, go ahead and speak.
I will, okay.
I have an opportunity right now.
Great. We're gonna have a mutual respect, and I will reciprocate everything.
Your time has started.
That's okay, it's important to me. So, don't confuse my passion with anger, there is a difference. I have passion, but some people may not have a fear, okay? You need to learn that. I've seen Mr. Nesmar sitting back, slouching in his chair, that's not professional, that doesn't seem like he has passion to be up there. I don't know him, I have nothing against him personally by any means, it's just nonverbal communication. So, just like the older lady spoke earlier, yeah, I am a little nervous speaking up here. Why? Because she's older than I am, I mean, so I don't mean to be rude, but I am a little nervous speaking up here, but I hear what everybody else has to say, and this is more of a microcosm of society here. You open up an open forum for people to speak, and everybody here is telling you they don't want the taxes. They tell you why they don't want the taxes, how were they affected. I run a business, and I couldn't realize why my business was slow the last few weeks. Then I put two and two together. It's because people who were affected by the flood had to spend money on homes repaired for themselves, or for their loved ones, their grandparents or their parents, which trickled down and affected my business and everybody else's business who were relying on that money. So because of the inactions, or the improper way of addressing or managing the city, the gates, everybody else gets affected because of incompetence, okay? Now, we all have a budget, everyone has a city, has the businesses. Just like the gentleman mentioned earlier, he has a certain amount of money he has to work with, and he has to do with that, make ends meet, like people who have a paycheck. You should do the same. Have your own budget and work within it. Now leave with this, I hope you go home, and I'll leave with this, because you'll never be able to speak over, I hope you go home with this, just like King Solomon in Kings One, praise and ask God for guidance, and I hope you do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I got one more thing. Besides owning those two businesses here downtown, I also have three houses on Wilson Road. I also have two for me.
Thank you, thank you. You had your time.
Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you very much. All right, anybody else want to speak on an item of interest, or an item on the... There are none. I'm gonna go on to item three, second reading to approve an ordinance by record code adopting the city of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. This is the second reading of the ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Exhibit A displays total proposed revenues are $77,585,220, and expenditures are $79,247,357. This vote must be by record vote and staff of management.
Just like there is a caption...
Yes, sir. An ordinance adopting the revenue expenditure budget for the city of Harlingen, Texas, both fiscal year October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020, in the amount of $77,585,220, and $79,247,357 respectively, providing for publication of the caption and of this ordinance and of being automatically... out to the...
Is there a motion?
There's a record vote.
Is there a motion?
A motion.
Yeah, number three, since there are motions to be approved even in the second ordinance on first reading. Motion second, so operate vote to the chairman of the committee. Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I have four consideration and appropriate action on a resolution to clarify property tax reflected in adopted budgets for fiscal year 2019, 2020 and related matters.
The fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget will require raising more property taxes than in the previous year. A vote separate from adopting the budget for the tax rate must be taken to redefine the property taxing.
Is there any, uh, a motion?
A motion. Second.
Uh, we need a...
Commissioner, this is the resolution, this is not required, we had a record vote.
All right. Motion second, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to, do you want to be recognized prior to the vote?
If I can be recognized.
All right, I'll recognize you, come to, come to the podium.
Robert Leffler, Harlingen, Texas, 909 Harper. Mayor, I just wanted to say that as we're going through the budget here, we already talked about it, the funds, the 4B money that shouldn't be spent on, on a supercar where we need the money for drainage and we don't need to raise taxes to get it, I've proposed to you guys options in the budget where you can ship that money around and use it, not here responsibly like you plan to use it. But let me point out that other people that have been inundated with flood and it's been brought up in this meeting, that people are not even living in their homes, they're still, they're still renovating from the flood damage. And I've got, I've got an offstate flood premium increase on one resident that was paying seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. And right now, they've got a new premium after this recent claim, this 2019 June claim, their premium has jumped to two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And if you don't think that that's going to affect the real estate in this city, the prices, people are not going to be able to qualify for the houses that they would have qualified under the old flood, flood rate premiums. This is worse than taxes, but you guys have an option to fund your, your, your spending or reprioritize your spending on something else. If you don't think that this, that these premium increases from this, from these flood policies is not going to affect the, the home sales in this city, then you guys are definitely short sighted in this.
All right, I'm gonna call for a vote again, if all of the members favor...
Your Honor, are we able to speak there?
If you want to speak, I'm gonna recognize you.
Thank you. I basically just wanted to ask a question, not necessarily of y'all, I'm gonna for the moment defer to Rick Navarro, but certainly you have other staffers, and my question simply is this, is the tax increase that's going to be coming up tied into the budget as Mr. Navarro has asserted, gonna be nine point eight one percent? Gabe or the city engineer answer that one question, or Dan wants to field it?
That's kind of the next item, Ron?
It's nine, nine point eight one?
That's part of the tax order.
Okay, and so that is the question?
It's in the ordinance itself.
Nine point eight one.
The body of the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
That's all I have.
All right, anyone else? Call for a vote again on item four, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
This is my side. Out of five, second reading to approve an ordinance by record vote adopting the 2019 Adalorum Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
This is the second reading of the ordinance adopting the 2019 Adalorum Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations, which is proposed at point five one eight one for one hundred valuation. Combined with the interest and sinking rate, it creates a total proposed rate of point six three zero zero, which is nine point eight one percent above the effective tax rate. The vote must be a record vote and staff recommends approval.
An ordinance fixing the Adalorum Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations for the city of Harlingen, Texas, for the calendar year 2019, at point five one eight one zero zero for one hundred dollars valuation, together with the Adalorum Tax Rate for the Interest and Sinking Fund, for a total proposed tax rate of point six three zero zero, providing for publication and relating to other matters related to the vote on.
I understand two, two actions on the side of my...
Two mayor actions on the side of this is M and L, and the next one will be...
Is there a motion?
Four.
Yeah.
Five.
Motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, move to adopt an Adalorum Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations, at zero point five one eight one zero, which is forty-two hundred dollars.
Mayor, that first, both of these sub-motions are two votes.
Is there, do we have a motion?
On second.
We have a second, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All right. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, I'm, I'm going to discuss a little bit. We now have seven public meetings in which the tax rate increase of four point one cents is being discussed. Two workshops, uh, at which Senate Bill Number Two was early in the ground in the open. And a special meeting called for the initiation of tax rate increase, which did not have a public hearing component on the agenda or a public hearing component attached to the item. Yet I recognize Commissioner Leffler, or I recognize Robert Leffler, Yolanda Shoppa, and, uh, Nervous Simpson, even though there was no public hearing component of it. Uh, there were two public hearings on the tax rate and then now there have been two meetings to vote on the tax rate. Over the course of these seven meetings, by my count, a total of, including tonight, fifteen different individuals spoke out opposing tax interests. At those, at those meetings, a lot of, and tonight, a lot of false and misleading statements have been made by individuals who spoke against the tax rate. I'm not gonna address every single one of them, but I can tell you that there's a lot, a lot of, uh, false statements. Surprisingly, despite all the media coverage, I, I have not had a single phone call or a single email or other outreach from broader community, other than the fourteen people who spoke multiple times at the, at the, at the seven days. Nobody in the healthcare industry, nobody from the retail industry, the hotel arena, the, uh, chamber board members, uh, or even other individuals. In fact, other individuals that I spoke to, that, that reached out to me actually, so they supported the tax increase because they appreciated what was being done and they appreciated what, what we're going to do with it. The reason I think some of these, uh, some have expressed support was because they understand the intent of the tax rate increase is that we can invest more in our infrastructure and our equipment. Just one drainage project alone, uh, this upcoming year will cost more than the tax rate increase. Tax rate increase will generate about one point four million dollars, and our match on that drainage project is one point seven million dollars. We're gonna be doing more drainage projects, both this fiscal year and next fiscal year because we do have a healthy fund balance and can afford to do those things. But if we want to continue to do them in the future, um, this is the kind of additional revenue that we're going to need. Obviously, it's not going to solve all of the problems, but it's going to allow us to kind of step up some of the projects, which is what I think we, all of us have heard from the broader community, that is desired for our city, is increased investment in our infrastructure. I understand opposition to tax rate increases. I've opposed them for the last fourteen years, but even at sixty-three cents, our tax rate is going to be ten to fifteen percent lower than most of the other Cameron County cities, including the other two largest cities in Cameron County, and it's going to be lower than most of the cities in the Dowling County. Now I'm gonna call for a record vote, beginning with the chairman of the committee.
Aye.
Men?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Um, does anybody have a second? Is there a second?
We need a session for the second motion.
Yeah.
This is to be sessioned.
I, I move the property tax rate to be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point six three, zero, zero, for each hundred dollars assessed, which is effectively a nine point eight one percent increase in the tax.
Record vote.
Aye.
Second.
He's a second.
Aye, yeah.
Which is...
I second.
Mayor, will you be recognized?
This is another item, is this another item?
No.
Another item, okay, I called for discussion, I called for discussion earlier on this item, so we're gonna take the record vote now.
Aye. 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 Aye.
All right. Item six, second reading to approve an ordinance by record vote adopting the 2019 Adalorum Tax Rate for the Interest and Sinking Fund for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
This is the second reading. This is the second reading of the ordinance adopting the 2019 Adalorum Tax Rate for Interest and Sinking, which is proposed at point one one nine zero zero, for one hundred dollar valuation.
One 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 nine.
One one nine, one one nine zero zero.
One one nine.
One 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 nine.
Zero zero, yes.
I think we're...
Combined with the Maintenance and Operations rate, it creates a total proposed rate of point six three, which is nine point eight one percent above the effective tax rate. The vote must be a record vote and staff recommends approval.
This is an ordinance fixing the Adalorum Tax Rate. An ordinance fixing the Adalorum Tax Rate for Interest and Sinking Payments for the city of Harlingen, Texas, both calendar year 2019, at point one 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 nine zero zero for one hundred dollars valuation, together with the Adalorum Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations, for a total proposed tax rate of point six three zero zero zero, providing for publication and relating to other matters related to the issue for the vote on.
Motion.
I make a motion, uh, move to adopt an Adalorum Tax Rate for Interest and Sinking of zero point one 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 nine zero zero for each one hundred dollars.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just have a question.
You want to be, huh?
I just want, I want to ask a question. So on the last one, we voted twice, it was the same action item, it required, is this gonna require two votes?
This will do, the second portion of it is statutory, you're fine.
Okay, I just want, I just want to confirm this so everybody understands that what we did the last time is we had two votes, the same item, this time we're gonna have another item.
Two votes.
Two votes. I'll yield my time.
You want to be recognized, Mr. Leffler, please. All right. You're, you're recognized. Robert Leffler.
You know how to get recognized. 909 Harper. Mayor, I appreciate your, your comments about, you know, diminishing the turnout, you know, of the public comments, the, the fourteen people, uh, obviously, uh, they don't represent the majority of the city according to your, your diagnosis of this situation. But, uh, I just wanted to say that, you know, you did mention that you didn't have any retail people or any, any developers contacting you, those are the folks that are getting our money. You know, your Bass Pro, your, you know, your convention center folks, I mean, of course they're not gonna complain, they're the ones that are benefiting, it's the ones that are flooded out of their homes that are gonna have to pay the bill. And I think that you need to reconsider the budget, all of you, Victor, you guys, y'all, y'all complained, you and members say, oh, well, public safety was, was, was driving this tax increase. You know what, I think they got a two percent or two and a half percent increase. We have the highest paid city management practically in the valley, that's the embarrassment. It's not public safety, it's not their salaries, it's not the department.
You're not addressing the item, the item.
Addressing the taxes, that's why I'm doing it.
The interest and sinking fund rate.
I'll yield my time.
You've already addressed the maintenance and or, and the maintenance rate. You can, you can address the interest and sinking fund, that's the item that's before us. You want to be recognized?
I do want to be recognized.
Okay.
Convention center debt, hard debt.
But you have to talk about the interest.
J.B. Garcia, 5718, Officer Simmons, thank you for letting me speak. I would also like to state that that was a real cute, predetermined statement that you had there for, for the tax vote, but you did, as you're mentioning these fourteen people, because I'm one of them and I'm offended that you're, uh, saying that some of these fourteen people were, basically you're calling us liars. I'd, I'd ask you to look in the mirror, in the mirror, in the mirror. No, fifteen people don't represent the people that are against the tax vote. A hundred plus people that were at the town hall meetings that you held, and I know you remember each one of those faces, and they can't be here today because they're dealing with their flood issues still, okay? That, that is, is, is District One, District Four and District Five, and those are the constituents that are gonna vote you all out in the next election. Thank you.
That's right.
Sir, take it, you want to be recognized? All right, anyone else want to be recognized? To address the interest and sinking fund rate.
Which is also part of...
If you're, I will say this, if you're opposed to this item, the interest and sinking fund rate, and you're opposed to repaying the debt that the city has.
Of course.
Are you opposed to repaying the city's debt?
Voters did a vote on that. We did not approve it.
Uh, no, Mr. Lozano, would you like to speak?
I'd like to.
It's not a conversation between you and Mr. Leffler.
I haven't said a word to him.
Get to press us.
This is a debt context and, and so you've brought out that, forthrightly, that you haven't gotten communication. Well, we're here to communicate to you that we're definitively opposed because look what's going on right at the very second. Some of y'all that are, some of y'all that are thinking that more debt cannot come, Houston is getting inundated possibly by eighteen inches, that could have come very close to us and as we've already stated, y'all are gonna be focusing on drainage. The last regular meeting, the last regular meeting, we had a forty-minute presentation regarding drainage, so now it's your foremost thing. That's creating debt and a ready day fund is there that has more than ample money, so you don't have to raise taxes, whether interest rate, maintenance and operation, or Adalorum, it doesn't matter what tax we're talking about, y'all have ample funds and you should utilize them because this is a rainy day.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the chair? Here in nine, I'm gonna go and ask all for a record vote.
Yes.
Re-raise, aye?
Aye.
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 Second, sub-motion.
Second.
Second motion, I move the property tax rate to be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point six three zero zero for each one hundred dollars assessed, which is effectively a nine point eight one percent increase.
One second, second. I, uh, call for a record vote. Record, aye? What did?
Aye.
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 All of us have sub-motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting. We are, uh, thanks for all.